State Banking Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than a community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Banking Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today, and just want to let you know we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us. We'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Gewin and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some-odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello. Lee Hines here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air. We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems. So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Gewin to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Beville State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Beville State has an opportunity that is right for you, with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
I pray. I do heaven Father, we thank you for this Another Day of Life, and we thank you for the blessings you've given us. We ask that you would be with us in this meeting. We thank you for the freedom we have of self-governance, be with this body politic, and make everything they say and do here tonight be pleasing and acceptable for you and be best for the citizens of the city of Winfield and surrounding community. First in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 15th Winfield City Council Meeting. Glad to have Mr. Larry back. Maybe he's doing well. Says he's doing a lot better. Looks a lot better. First item on the agenda is approved minutes for August 1st, 2023 council meeting. If nobody's got a comment or question how the minutes have been recorded, but need to ask for motion to approve. Gina made a motion and all in favor. Next item on the agenda, we've got Chief Allen Stovall here on behalf of the Fire Department. Chief?
We're living a day and a half now. It's hard to get some good volunteers like we used to, but we've had some good guys. We've got some good guys. We've had some come and go. We got one member with us tonight, John Reese. He started in '07. He's been with Park for 16 years. He just recently completed his volunteer 160. He got a certification in that. And we wanted to recognize John tonight because not only is the Winfield Fire Department lucky to have him, I think the city of Winfield itself is lucky to have him. And we got something to give him when we let Blake know what he got.
So like Chief just said, John recently completed his 160, but it's a little bit more than that. The volunteer firefighter course is 160 hours plus 40 hours of hazardous materials awareness and operations training, which is one of the hardest courses and most failed courses in the state of Alabama. John has shown more perseverance and dedication than anybody I have met for trying to achieve this certification. I would have gave up a long time ago, and I don't give up very easily for those that know me. And I was talking to Chief the other day, and I thought that somebody like John, who is always there for us, needed to be recognized. So I have John's certificate. Then also, the Fire College has a program called the BEST Volunteer Emergency Services Training Program, which recognizes volunteers throughout the state if you complete a certain level of training. And with the volunteer, certified volunteer course he took, the hazardous materials course he took, and the first responder course he took, they have, we was able to apply and get him approved as the BEST program. And we have a coin here with its own number. The coins do not get minted until they complete it and you apply for it. So this number on this coin is specific to John, and we would just like to present to him tonight and recognize him a little bit. So.
I just want to add to you right quick. John thought he was here for something else.
Yes.
What did John think he's here for?
Come on up here. Good job. I can bounce for seeing him all over the place every time you're on the call or whatever. He's usually the one that's in the ditch doing the work, what I've been noticing.
Can't see everybody's face.
Can't see everybody's face.
Eric, if you could scoot in.
Good job, John.
I'm not proud of trust in him, though.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 1354 for the park application for the RTP funds. We've always discussed this.
This is the resolution for them to be able to apply for the fines?
Yeah. Basically, what, like Angie said, this is a resolution allowing them to apply for these RTP funds. I'll read this real quick. "Whereas the city of Winfield proposes to construct trails with RTP funds that will benefit local citizens, whereas the city of Winfield intends to apply for funding of $400,000 through the Recreational Trails Program grant for fiscal year 2024 funding cycle for construction of the park and now therefore be resolved, the city council in Winfield that the city of Winfield, Alabama is authorized to submit an application to the Recreational Trails Program grant for the fiscal year 2024 funding cycle, funding of $400,000 to construct the park. I need to ask for motion to approve that where the park comply for this RTP application." Tim, Gina, all in favor? The next item on the agenda is business license. Gina asked that we put this on the agenda to, I mean, on the agenda to discuss the business, some of the issues that we're having with a business license. Gina, if you want to.
We are having not a huge problem, but we do have a small problem with some business licenses. And Sandy printed this off, which kind of tells you like the steps that we take. But after, like right here where it says March 2nd, there's an additional 15%. Really after that, we start doing a 1% per month, but then that come out as far as it goes. So someone, let's say that has let their business license expire six months, or let's say they're even in their second year and they haven't renewed their business license, we don't have any, I guess, stiffer penalties for that. And I don't know, this may be something that Todd might have to help with, help us decide what to do and how to treat this for those businesses that are very delinquent.
Have you, you got a copy of that? Have you looked over and got a copy of that ordinance?
She gave him one of those. And some of it's kind of vague, but then some of it kind of allows you to, like if you want to incorporate something on your own, you can do that, but it's all kind of deciding how you want to actually do it. And I just don't think it's fair. I mean, you know, for the most part, all businesses do what they're supposed to do, but for those that don't, it's not fair for them to get away with it and other businesses do what they're supposed to do. And there's just not really, I guess, any stiffer penalties for those that don't. In some places, I just kind of checked around, they didn't go as far as closing the business if they fail to renew their business license.
Sandy's here tonight. Did, I'll talk with Sandy briefly on this.
I mean, in everything that we have laid out, I mean, she's done everything, but then some still won't comply. They still won't.
How many, how many total we got that has not renewed in the last two years? Just two years old or older?
I think we have two that are roughly two years old, two years, and roughly eight that are six months maybe. Which, like I said, it's not a lot compared to the businesses that we have, but I don't care if we only have one or two. It's not fair to all the others that comply to let him not.
Has all the council, has the council looked over this, the ordinance that we've got in place regarding business license and what's required of a business in Winfield for a business license? Has everybody looked over that or had a, would like to look over that a little further and must.
Well, I mean, and it is a thick packet. And right now, I mean, you don't have time to look through all of it, so it may be that we need to discuss it at the next council meeting and let everybody have a chance to read it, but.
Yeah, I kind of think that's what we need to do is let them look over that, go through that. Key topics regarding the business license, the penalties and the delinquent accounts.
You can do at least as less as you can up to $500. And like I said, there's one municipality that I spoke to that if after April, they get a visit, if they still don't comply, then they get a summons to court to have the business closed.
The council agreed to look over that and let's bring the tables to the next council meeting. Look over it, get some ideas on moving forward with that process of acquiring past due on business license. That'd be good. Keith? We'll table that. We're going, next item, surplus bid of Gov. deals on park equipment. We had two, two Gators, I believe, what we had on the Gov. deal. Both these, you said a reserve. Both these meets your reserve?
Yes, sir.
Got a John Deere Gator CX, 2007 model that we put. It's got 1,045 hours. And the high bid on that Gator was $2,125. $2,125, that was through, like I said, on Gov. deals. And then we've got a, another John Deere Gator. It's a John Deere Trail Gator 4x2. We're not sure what year it is. It's an older machine with 4,243 hours on it. It had, best of my knowledge, the CX model had very, the only thing that's really ailing that was the fuel tank. Fuel tank had a problem. They had a tank inside the bed of it there to use as a fuel tank. But on this other Trail Gator 4x2, it had a clutch issue with several other smaller issues. For it needed a battery, wouldn't start, and then the seats is pretty bad on it. It was $1,325. $1,325 was the high bid on it. I need to know if the council wants to move forward allowing these, to take these bids from Gov. deals on those two units. And by the way, they got, these three Gators, they'll still have one Gator to go. That puts them back at the same amount of utility vehicles that they had before.
You mean what we were asking?
The metric reserve. Tim made motion to accept these two bids, and Keith, all in favor? If you will, Mike, notify them and let them know. Next item on the agenda is the fuel bill, fuel bids. Every year, except, I guess it's the first meeting in September, we accept the fuel bids for the city. Mike, Mike usually prepares a package that goes out to all the licensed fuel distributors in the city that buys a license within the city that has a facility inside the city limits, corporate limits, for the purchase of fuel for the police department, fire, park. We've been normally having two to three bids, three bids, two, three bids. Did you get the other issue cleared up? How many bids you going, how many mailouts you going to have this?
We currently have three distributors with a business license, current business license that we'll be sending out. If council approves, we'll be sending those out tomorrow. We bid to you at the next council meeting.
Is the council familiar with those three companies that we'll be sending those bids to? The council got a problem with sending those bids out to those three distributors? It's needed.
That one, that one that's having issues, financial issues, is that one of them?
Does not have the current business license.
You've got three that does.
Three that does.
Is there a better way to do this than the way we're pricing it? We've done it several years. Is there a better way to work it and do it than what we're pricing it? That quoting it over so much over rack?
That can be complicated when the way that that's written, you know, being on that side of it, but it's kind of complicated. It'd be a little bit of a work process for somebody to figure to make sure that the taxes, I noticed on some of the, I looked at some of the bills that has come in, and it breaks the taxes out and builds back certain taxes. There's certain taxes that the city's exempt, and there's certain taxes the city's not exempt. And then that, and when that wording of that, it says everything, transportation cost, applicable taxes included in your price over rack, be it. And that, I mean, if you try to break that out and try to figure, it's a little bit complicated.
Trying to figure the racks is pretty hard.
Well, the rack changes every day, and it sometimes it changes twice a day, but it changes every day. And I think the way you've got it worded in there is the first month, is it the Monday, the rack price of that Monday?
It's been, one company that's had to bid updates the rack price each day. We've had others that maybe on Monday and Friday, they would look at the rack price for those days, Monday would stay until Thursday, and then Friday starts over the weekend.
Because every day of the week, it's, the rack is cheaper than the other.
Hard to figure. It's like it every day. I mean, I have seen the rack price change 75 cents in one day. That's a, that's a pretty substantial change. I don't know, you know. Do you have a problem figuring it? Do you cross-check it?
We, we do occasionally. It's not every week, every month type thing, but we do occasionally check. And the companies over the years have always been good to work with to provide us the information needed, whether it's a daily update or twice a week update.
Have we had a problem with fueling, fueling issues at any of the current location, current bid?
And they had trouble with the machine last week. We had to go inside. Okay, a good day, but none of the, none of the machines worked.
You have a car occasionally that won't work or, over the years, whatever company has replaced it before, if it was something with their software program, they've tried to correct the other thing as possible.
So all, you think the way that we're doing is probably okay?
Todd was probably, I think drafted the form and maybe did some research on how other towns did. But from our standpoint, it's worked well over the years doing as we're doing now.
I mean, it's basically an honor system. We don't require, we're not requiring purchase invoices for every bill to verify, but we say in there that the purchase invoices must be a viable loan request, and we periodically will check to make sure that, you know, you don't want to make it so overly burdensome that nobody wants to bid it or the bidders actually add to because it's going to be so much of a, sometimes overly requiring information can cause the price to go up instead of going down. You know, if you get to, that's the reason I was asking, is there something we can do that makes it easier so that it's easier to price, therefore our price stays more constant? And I don't know. I'm not in that business. So I was just, Mike deals with that every day with them, and I was willing to take suggestions. If there's a better way to word it, then I can go back and reword it, but if not, let's just leave it as is. Okay.
I need to ask the council, I mean, to approve him sending out these three business license owners. Mike, Keith, and then Gina, all in favor? All right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 1355 is Transportation Plan Rebuild Alabama Act.
That tells a little bit about it. You have to have it passed by the end of this month if you're going to apply for those.
Pretty much we got to do this resolution to if we're going to try to apply for any of the Alabama, rebuild Alabama funding that you see happening that we've actually, I believe, that grant, I believe that paving project that we did, where we done Quarter Estates during that time, wasn't some of that money, didn't we incorporate some of that money in the rebuild Alabama? We did $250,000 during that time, so I need to ask for a motion to have this resolution in place, adopting the transportation plan pursuant to the Rebuild Alabama Act 2019-2. Second by Tim. All in favor? The next item on the agenda is old business. Let me, if you don't mind, let me start out a little bit on old business. I don't know if anybody's been down to the community center, but it looks like Northwest Bama Builders has finished a canopy on the, on the north side that we worked on there for a good little while to decide how we was going to do it. And then I went down today and looked at it again, looked, they've done a real good job putting that in and it looks like it's going to serve the purpose well for the reason why we installed that canopy. They've got their, of course, they've got the two new Kubotas. They had both those in used walls down there, they were good looking units. On the, we're still, we're still kind of, in lingo for as a police jurisdiction, we, we still, me and Todd still working on different things with that, so there's really no update on that for where we need to go, what we're doing forward on that. We're still discussing, doing research on how to best handle that situation. We hadn't heard nothing from Tim's consultants this week, but as far as I know, we're still on schedule for September 11th is a finish or complete date.
When do you have to know this?
Got a sign out here too, that's, I don't know if y'all remember the Winfield sign that was in brick, that's right here on site of 118. We've got to come up with a, what we, what we are satisfied with insurance installing back on that. I mean, they, the initial, the initial sign that they wanted us to do was, what was it made out of? Angie resolved.
Stainless steel.
Stainless steel. It had cutouts and I wasn't really too impressed with the way that was going to look. We had to ask them about possibly doing something in copper to where it would look a little bit better instead of just cut out of stainless. To do copper, those are going to be 12 to 15,000 dollars more than what they had intended initially paying for that replacement of that sign. I kind of just need some input, I guess, from the council, how they think, how you think that we need to move forward and what kind of sign, what kind of material you think we need to make that sign out of? The brick columns, there'll be two brick columns on each side?
It's a sound like this, it's more like a stag stone.
Yeah. They still part of the sign out there.
Copper's 15,000 dollars more, I pass on it. Stainless steel will be there a hundred years from now.
I just something for you to think about, what we got, we need to decide, tell them what we're going, how we want it to look.
What was the exact wording on the sign?
It's just the logo.
Had a, had a logo on it. I just, that's basically what it looked like cut out of stainless, correct? No colors?
You can have it painted, but the maintenance on a painted sign like that wouldn't.
I don't got what it was made out of before purported it's still out there. It was some kind of.
It was like a, the wood of some kind.
Just don't want to think about it, kind of go run it through your mind, but probably we need to try to probably have this, have some ideas next council meeting because this has been, this, this December will be two years that sign has been down. So we need to move forward with coming to a conclusion of what we want to put on. I've had a request for several stop signs to be redone, replaced. I'm going to get with Gina and have those signs printed, she can do that, she can do the stop signs down there, can't she?
She can, but unless it's changed, we can buy them already made cheaper than we can buy the materials ourselves. We can buy them quantity.
I'm going to be moving forward replacing all those signs that's, that's in dire need if council, unless the council objects to it. I think that's pretty much all I've got. Keith, you got any? Gina?
I don't have any old business, but I did want to share that on Thursday, and some of you may know this, we have a new pediatrician and they're going to have an open house for her on Thursday, the 17th, from 1:00 to 3:00, at the Northwest Primary Care Center. And her name is Dr. Robin Winfro.
That's this Thursday?
So that will be nice to have a pediatrician in town.
Gina? Larry, you got any? James?
No.
I guess if nobody else has got anything else, I need to ask from, go to the next item on the agenda and ask for a motion to pay the bills. Keith made a motion, Tim second, all in favor? Need to ask for motion to adjourn.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware, Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now has a lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero turn mowers. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition. We've been family owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at 205-921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you tell your story.
Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner at 205-487-4327.